Forward order, roll call please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ken, you want to start us off?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That will get us to the minutes of May 7th, 2024. If everybody take a few moments to review them. Satisfied? There's no errors, omissions, corrections, or discussion? Motion please.
Go, Sturk, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall. Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item four is recognition, and it is consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Kelly R. Rommel, retiring police officer. Catherine, would you please read that into record?
Certainly. Resolution of appreciation to Kelly R. Rommel, whereas Kelly R. Rommel began her employment with the city of Oak Creek on July 22nd, 1991, as a full-time police officer, and whereas during her 32 years and 10 months of service, Kelly R. Rommel has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer, and whereas Kelly has been a valuable employee during her years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has a great teammate for those who she has worked with, and her dedication to the department and coworkers as a pillar of support through her roles on the use of force training unit and evidence technician unit, and whereas Kelly received 14 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards, most notably are the Medal of Valor and Life Saving Awards for her actions at the Sick Temple in 2012, where her actions with her teammates saved lives and countless others from an active shooter. Furthermore, she was honored as a top cop in Washington DC in 2013 for her actions at the Sick Temple in 2012, all of which have impacted both the Oak Creek Police Department and the community as a whole. Whereas Kelly served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, notably serving as a bike patrol officer and field training officer, helping to prepare new officers for their careers in law enforcement. Kelly also served as a DARA officer early in her career and later as a school resource officer, establishing a connection with the youth of Oak Creek and strengthening our connection to the community. She also served as an evidence technician and on our Career Survival Unit, where she promoted officer wellness with a positive mindset. Through Kelly's tenacity and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek, and whereas in 2005, Kelly was a part of a small group of Oak Creek officers and some of the first in the state of Wisconsin to become crisis intervention officers. This training was critical for officers to successfully resolve instances of citizens in a mental health crisis, which was on the rise, and whereas Kelly served as our full-time training officer from 2020 through 2024, ensuring Oak Creek Police Staff received the highest quality training and further developing the unit into what it has become today, and whereas Kelly is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing over 32 years and 10 months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Kelly for her years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Kelly and her family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Kelly R. Rommel, passed and adopted this 21st day of May 2024.
Thank you Catherine. At this time, I'll invite Chief Stecker up.
Good evening, council. Dave Stecker, chief of police. Just want to take a couple of minutes. I know we tried to encapsulate in all the resolutions, a 20, 30-year career, and for Kelly, almost 33 years. She's put a lot of her life and just her efforts and compassion into her job every single day. I first met Kelly when I was 16. I was in a bad car accident. Treated me with such compassion that you'd think that we've known each other our whole lives, and she's done that for every single person she's come across, as well as trying to make sure that all of us internally are well, making sure we have good mental health and wellness, and making sure that we're all physically fit to make sure that we can meet the demands of our job daily. So Kelly's going to be greatly missed. She's been a very good coworker and friend for many years, and I wish her the best in her retirement. She deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Council members, any words for Kelly? I guess I'm just going to add this. 33 years of service, Kelly's really been a role model here in the city of Oak Creek. She may not have been one of the first female police officers, but she ensured she wouldn't be the last. You can see by her resume here on this proclamation, she served at every level of the police department. She was a great asset to the city and will be missed. It'll be big shoes to fill. So on behalf of the common council, citizens of Oak Creek, and myself, I just want to wish Kelly and her family a very long and happy retirement, and thank her for all her years of service. So with that, motion please.
Marshall moves to accept resolution number 12495-052124, a resolution of appreciation to Kelly R. Rommel, retiring police officer.
Mr. Kelski, real second. Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item five is consideration of a resolution of appreciation to David S. Ashenhurst, retiring police captain. Catherine?
Resolution of appreciation to David S. Ashenhurst, whereas David S. Ashenhurst began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on December 2nd, 1996, as a full-time police officer, and whereas during his 27 years and six months of service, David has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer early in his career, then rising through the ranks as sergeant, lieutenant, and captain of administration, and whereas David has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a model teammate for all those he has worked with and those under his command, being well-known for his work ethic, compassion for his fellow teammates, his dedication to the department, and his leadership, and whereas David received 15 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards, most notably are three life-saving awards to include rescuing and reviving a person who hanged themselves, grabbing onto and preventing a person from jumping off the I-94 overpass at Ryan Road, and assisting in the prevention of a person from hanging themselves. Captain Ashenhurst received an award of excellence in his critical role as the police department liaison and support person through Lieutenant Bryant Murphy and his family following the Sick Temple shooting and the Career Achievement Award, and whereas David served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, Crisis Negotiations Unit, Career Survival Unit, Evidence Technician Unit, Honor Guard, Recruitment Team, Field Training Officer, Awards Committee, and Command Post Operator. Through David's leadership and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more capable and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek, and whereas David served as a school resource officer, establishing a connection with the youth of Oak Creek and strengthening our connection to the community, as well as being instrumental in creating and promoting our special needs program, and whereas David's, during David's career with the Oak Creek Police Department, he attended and graduated from the School of Police Staff and Command through Northwestern University in 2011. Furthermore, he was instrumental in his contributions to the National Night Out Committee, working on our Career Survival Family Programs and promoting the staff's mental health. He constantly utilized the knowledge and training he received throughout his career and willingly shared it with all members of the Oak Creek Police Department, and whereas David is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing over 27 years and six months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek for and behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to David S. Ashenhurst for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to David S. Ashenhurst and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to David S. Ashenhurst, passed and adopted this 21st day of May 2024.
Thank you Catherine. Once again, I'll invite Chief Stecker up.
Good evening again, Chief Stecker, Oak Creek Police Department. A lot of experience with just these two walking out the door. 60 years of experience. I think by the beginning of July, when we go through all of our retirements, it's north of 150 years of experience with those that we've had retired just alone in the last two months. Dave had an extraordinary career. He obviously, as it was already stated, again, somebody very compassionate. He had a lot of compassion for a lot of people, somebody with a child with special needs, and he needed to, and I could see that in everything that he did. When he was a school resource officer, one of the things that he came back and really wanted to promote, and was able to afterwards with one of our recent retirees, Hank Narai, was to create our special needs alert program. So anybody with special needs could come in, we could get all their information, help our officers if we ever came across them on the street, to be able to communicate with them and get them back to their loved ones. The compassion part with Dave, I think, started at home. His dad was a deputy sheriff from Milwaukee, and he saw what his dad did growing up and wanted to emulate that. First person I promoted when I became chief, Dave Ashenhurst, needed somebody with his drive and compassion to balance my black-and-whiteness, if you will. So definitely was my counterpart, somebody I learned a lot from over the years, and I want to wish him the best in retirement as well. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Council members, anything on Dave? Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, Dave, incredible asset to the department. You heard the proclamation, another person who has just come right through the ranks of every stage of Oak Creek police work, going to be greatly missed, as the chief said. We've had a rash of retirements, and I was at swearing-in yesterday, as well as a retirement yesterday at PD, and it really occurred to me, I try to get to know a lot of the employees and talk to them. Unfortunately, I don't get enough time, and then when these people retire, I really feel glad for them, but sad that I didn't take more time to really get to know them, because they're extraordinary people in their own way. So Dave definitely fits that description as well as Kelly. So again, on behalf of the entire council, myself, and citizens of Oak Creek, Dave, and we want to thank you for all your hard work you've done for Oak Creek, made it a better community, and we wish you and your family a long and happy retirement. So we could, motion for Dave?
We'll move to approve resolution 12496-052124, a resolution of appreciation to David S. Ashenhurst, retiring police captain.
Roll call.
Elder woman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item six is a mayoral proclamation for antiotropic lateral sclerosis awareness month, May, and this is occurs in the month of May, 2024. Catherine, would you please?
Certainly. Amyotrophic lateral sclerosis awareness month, May, 2024, whereas amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, known by many as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain lost connection with the muscles slowly taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe, and whereas every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS, and whereas on average, patients diagnosed with ALS only survive two to five years from the time of diagnosis, and whereas ALS has no cure, and whereas people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service, and whereas securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS, and whereas clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS, and whereas we celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Ice Bucket Challenge through a renewed commitment to galvanize public awareness and support, leading to significant investments in ALS research, and whereas the ALS Association, as the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research globally, has committed over 154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and 18 other countries, and whereas our commitment to accelerating the pace of discovery remains unwavering, fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until we can cure it. Whereas ALS Awareness Month increases the public's awareness of people with ALS, dire circumstances, and acknowledges the terrible impact this disease has, not only on the person, but on his or her family and the community, and recognizes the research being done to eradicate this disease. Now therefore, I, Daniel J. Bukavich, do hereby proclaim this month of May, 2024, in the city of Oak Creek, as ALS Awareness Month, I call upon all Americans to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding, and standing in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease, dated this 21st day of May, 2024.
Thank you Catherine.
You're welcome.
Council members, would anybody like to say anything on ALS? I do feel it's important that we take a few moments to recognize these different months and these life-threatening diseases. They're out there, and if you take a pause for those that are afflicted by it, think about it, and think about how blessed you are that maybe you're not afflicted by it, but you do have the means to try to help the cause and find a cure, whether it's ALS or any other disease. We should be compassionate towards our fellow human beings, and it's only right to take a moment. That's why we did a mayoral proclamation on that. So, thank you. Moving on, we will go to item seven, and that is a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of Marcia Ware, Director of Marketing and Public Relations. As you all know, we went on an extensive search in the reorganization for a new marketing person. It was a very full field. We had some excellent candidates that came down. Many of you took part in the interviews across the way, whether they were preliminary or finals, and we got some excellent candidates tonight. It is at your discretion to concur with the appointment of Ms. Ware. Questions, comments? Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to make a couple of comments with regards to transparency with our selection process. I know Marcia, she knows my wife. They worked together at our church. My son was involved in a birthday party long, long ago, but I just need to mention that because when I wanted to be a part of the four-person interview on Friday, on that Friday, and Marcia was one of the four finalists, I purposely was absent from that because I didn't want any type of favoritism or anything whatsoever. I purposely stayed away from the whole process because Marcia was involved, and I just wanted to make it clear that that I looked at all the information and I saw her resume, but I looked at it as an individual, not as somebody I knew, and I hope that makes sense because I just didn't want somebody to think, well, you supported her because you and your wife, her and your wife are friends. So I just wanted to make that clear, put it on the record.
Thank you for that. Anyone else want to comment? Ken?
Thank you, Dan. Marcia, it was a pleasure to be part of the last round of interviews. It was, I don't usually get to do that here, but it was very interesting. We'd be a part of, as the mayor said, we had a very full candidate interview, a very full day of that date interviewing some very, very qualified folks, and I really did appreciate your preparedness and your insight and your history and your experience in the field, and wish you the best years. We're obviously looking for great things, and welcome aboard.
Ken, anyone else? If not, can we get a motion?
Gail, move to concur with the mayor's appointment of Marcia Ware, Director of Marketing and Public Relations.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
All right. At this time, I will invite Marcia up. Do you want to say a few words?
Everyone, I'm a little shorter than the last person. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Just for any of you who don't know me already, a little bit about my background, right before working at this new role of marketing and PR for the city of Oak Creek. I served as Director of University Marketing for Cardinal Stritch University. I did have some time off in between to care for a family member who underwent a number of surgeries over six months, and I also was Director of Corporate Marketing for Roadrunner Transportation Systems, which at the time was one of the fastest-growing transportation companies in the country. I've also done a lot of consulting throughout my career in the areas of marketing research, marketing communications, and also management training for companies like Northwestern Mutual, Harley-Davidson Motor Company, and Blaine's Farm and Fleet. So I am very excited about this role. Starting June 3rd, I'm excited to be able to be part of the team and lead the team that tells the stories of the great things that are happening here in the city of Oak Creek, and I have just enjoyed the process very much, getting to know so many people, and thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? None?
Nope, okay.
Wish you well and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right ahead. Item eight is a public hearing. It's for a PUD amendment requested by Mike Faber, Creek Two Land LLC for amendments to the existing planned unit development for Creekside Corporate Park affecting the property at 9955 South 13th. Catherine, would you please read that in?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Michael Faber, Creek Two Land LLC for amendments to the existing planned unit development for Creekside Corporate Park affecting the property at 9955 South 13th Street. Applicant is Michael Faber, Oak Creek, Oak, Creek Two Land LLC. Property owner is Creek Two Land LLC, 13th Street Oak Creek LLC, B Corp Corridor 13th Street LLC, Creekside Corporate Park Property Owners Corp., EG Milwaukee Capstone LLC. Legal description there follows of the PUD, date of notice, April 22nd, 2024.
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kristy Lane, Community Development Director. This is a PUD. The PUD was adopted in 2009. The language implied that only a single loaded parking configuration was allowed, abutting the south property line of the parcel highlighted in front of you. Site and building plans were approved for a building in 2012, excuse me, 2022, but that site plan showed a double-loaded parking area south of the building, abutting the property line. So this application is to amend the PUD language from 2009 to reflect the approved plans that were approved by the Plan Commission. The amendment is limited to just the southern portion of the parcel. No other substantive changes are proposed for the PUD. So you can see the area highlighted in red. That's the double-loaded parking area. Even though we're talking about double-loaded, there's still a 45 to 50-foot landscaping buffer in berm from that south property line to the southern edge of the parking lot. Plan Commission did recommend approval.
Thank you very much. As this is a public hearing, I will make three calls. If you would like to speak on the subject, please approach podium, give your name and address. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak on item number eight, please approach podium, give your name and address. Okay, we will now close the public hearing and go on to item nine, which is consideration of the ordinance, 3099, approving the amendment to the planned unit development for Creekside Corporate Park affecting the properties at 9955 South 13th. Leave it up to council members. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none, motion please.
Gail, move to approve ordinance 30099, approving all the, approving amendments to the planned unit development for Creekside Corporate Park affecting the property at 9955 South 13th Street.
Mr. Kelski, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 10 is a floodplain amendment, and it's consideration of a request by Michael Faber, Ryan Business Park LLC in the city of Oak Creek, to amend portions of the floodway and floodway fringe districts affecting the properties at 9514 South 13th Street, also known as 1293 West Ryan Road, 9554, 9556, 9600, 9654, and 9700, South 13th Street, 9512, 9601, South Bartel Court, and 741, 835, 901, and 13 West Ryan Road, and to update the zoning and sign code to reflect the amendments. Read that in.
Sure. Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Michael Faber, Ryan Business Park LLC in the city of Oak Creek, to amend portions of the FW floodway and FF flood fringe districts affecting the properties at 9514 South 13th Street, also known as 1293 West Ryan Road, 9554, 9556, 9600, 9654, 9700, South 13th Street, 9512, and 9601, South Bartel Court, 741, 835, 901, and 913, West Ryan Road, and to update the zoning and sign code to reflect the amendments. Applicant is Michael Faber, Ryan Business Park LLC in the city of Oak Creek. Property owner, Ryan Business Park LLC, Milwaukee County Commerce 94 Project LLC, city of Oak Creek, Charles Kahler and Deborah Meyer, Norman C. Bartel, I can't say it, Trust, and Bernice M. Bartel Trust, and Steve Brash. Legal description there follows, date of notice, April 22nd, 2024.
Thank you Catherine. Kristi, you want to wrap that all up neatly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't come up with the title. So there's a lot of addresses listed because there's a lot of parcels you can see identified in the map in front of you. You may recall, we had two similar public hearings at the last meeting two weeks ago, where this is simply required compliance with FEMA, state and local floodplain requirements. There was a letter of map revision adopted by FEMA in 2022. This is simply just a procedural item to modify the text in our zoning code to reflect and adopt those particular letter of map revision, and just for understanding, the red dash lines is where the floodway was identified previously in 2008, but with the modifications that took place in the wetlands and the new delineation and so forth, the blue line is the new floodway identified and adopted in 2022. Plan Commission recommended approval at its meeting in April.
Thank you, Kristi. As this is a public hearing, I will make three calls once again. Anybody wishing to speak? Again, name, address, and approach podium. This will be the first call.
Good evening. Chuck Kahler, 901 West Ryan Road, and also 741 West Ryan Road. I have some concerns regarding this rezoning and the new flood fringe floodplain boundaries, and basically, I'm not pointing fingers at Mr. Faber here, but I have a couple of concerns. Number one, I'm wondering why my properties are even listed on this. I did not give any permission for this or any acknowledgement that it was going to be redrawn. But the main reason is, when that Amazon building went up, very near and dear to that, because it's basically in my backyard, when that north elevation of that building was put up, I wondered how in the world the city of Oak Creek would allow that to be built in the south side of the floodway for the Oak Creek. If it could be any closer, it would've been in the bank of the river. So my point is, I believe due to the fact that that building was put where it is, it pushed that floodplain onto my property, and I have issues with that, because I thought that was Development 101, that you cannot divert water to somebody else's property, and I guess that's what I have to say. I oppose this ordinance due to the fact that I'm getting more of a floodway than I had before. Based on that drawing, where the red mark, and now all of a sudden the blue mark, it increased it onto my property.
Chuck, can you, you're talking on a too long narrow?
I would be the middle lot.
Lot of those streets?
Yes, right where that arrow was.
Okay, to be fair, they didn't draw these to accommodate the building. Building went in as per what our zoning codes were at the time. So we didn't put the building in and adjust floodplains. These were actually done by FEMA, correct? Correct on that? So...
This is a recent drawing after the building went in.
They routinely, I just handed maps to other parts of the city as well to our lead engineer because we normally, they redraw these floodlines frequently.
My understanding that this had to be redone due to the development.
Unfortunately, I think you're misunderstanding that the development went in as per what it was at the time and met all setbacks and what have you within the city. So they didn't adjust this based on the development.
You're telling me that by building a building in floodway?
He didn't build it in flood.
They had, they had to have. They had to have. Where that building sits, I know that was floodway on the south side of the creek. I know that. And now all of a sudden that floodway increased. Path of least resistance goes where there's nothing. So I know that's what happened. The timing, I can attest to that, but I guarantee you that building was built in the floodway.
I, and you know what? I'll defer to Matt because in my time here, we do not approve buildings in floodways.
I wouldn't think so, but I tell you, I know that. It had to be. It had to be equal on each side of the creek, a floodway area.
Why does it have to be equal?
Because my way goes uphill. So why would water go uphill when on the south side of the creek it was, it was more downhill?
I'm not an engineer, so I'm asking you, and you just gave me the explanation. It probably wouldn't flood as much uphill as it does downhill. So again, when the building went in, I'm sure we did the setbacks and we have the drawings to prove where the building went in. But either way, what we're doing now is set by FEMA.
I don't agree with that, that argument, Dan.
And I can respect that, Chuck, but that's what we're here.
And I don't agree that that building was not put into a floodway and then it was regraded to compensate for that, but unfortunately now the floodway increased on my property. That's the point.
Once again, we're not here to talk about the building. We're here to talk about these lines tonight. This could have got, this could have got redrawn with or without the building. It's my understanding.
Well, maybe it should have been done that way, and then I would understand that that had nothing to do with it. But I don't believe that.
What if they would have redrawn these without the building? Then what would you have thought?
Exactly. Well, then, I don't say they would come out like this if that building wasn't there.
Not an engineer. I just, we get what we get from FEMA. Matt, got something?
Unfortunately, Mayor, I wasn't part of this at the time. It was a previous city engineer, but I can definitely review our records and go back on during the time that the design and the development happened and review those records that we have on file and give you an answer at that point, once I have some time to review those, the data.
Uh, sorry.
Yeah.
Senator Kristi, Chuck had a point. Mike, you can probably answer. Is it common practice included, Jason parcels through this flood fringe redo stuff? Or is that, Mike, you can probably shake your head.
Mayor, council members, Mike Faber with Ryan Business Park LLC and 17W 24222 Riverwood Drive, Waukesha 53188. I'm the developer. Our surveyor has told me multiple times that FEMA requires them to evaluate potential downstream impacts from any work that affects the waters of the US and the south branch of the Oak Creek is waters of the US. So when they do this, they have to make unbelievable calculations. We were entitled to regrade our parcel, which is the lot seven up at the corner of Ryan Road and 13th Street. The changes we made to our parcel included improving the flood storage on our parcel, removing invasive species, planting native species of plants, improving the flow of the water by slowing it down by having rock outcrops along the bank, and building riffles in the stream bed to improve habitat and also slow the flow of the water. So the surveyor, Pinnacle Engineering Group, told me that we have to evaluate and show FEMA that there are no negative downstream impacts. It's absolutely understandable to me why Mr. Kahler views the change in the lines on his parcel as being a negative impact to him, as if the floodway or the flood fringe is increasing onto his property. However, the previous maps that had been there for a long time were created from aerial topography. It's not very accurate. And when we go to do the evaluation of any downstream impacts on our parcel and our regrading work, we're required to send out surveyors to do much more detailed with today's technology, much more detailed topo lines. So what I would explain to you and to Mr. Kahler is that the flood fringe and floodway on his parcel didn't change. It's, it was always this way. Nothing, no grading happened on his parcel. It's a matter of this is a more accurate drawing than was possible using aerial topography in the historical past. So FEMA requires you to use the current technology and submit all the computer modeling. And so it certainly looks like it is increasing on his parcel if you just look at the lines. But the reality is it's not putting any more water on his parcel in the one-hundred-year flood conditions than would have been there anyway. And I can also speak to, I reviewed the Amazon drawings and their parcel, and I can tell you, there's no way that their building would have been approved had the building intruded into the flood, floodway, certainly. And no building can be in the flood fringe, although in some cases, pavements can be in the flood fringe at the property owner's risk. So to me, it's understandable how someone could have that reaction by looking at the lines, but I'm told by our surveyor, and I think the engineering department will be able to look at it and bear it out, it's just that this is more accurate. If someone has a request to build in the situation where they're adjacent to or potentially in a floodplain, they would have to do the more accurate measurement themselves before they would be allowed to build, to be able to establish that the building would not be in the floodplain. And Mr. Kahler or anyone else in that context would have found out the same more accurate information about where the line really is.
I'd like to follow up, but then for, since, you know, Chuck's parcel is not technically part of your development.
Right.
Is his parcel included as a requirement or just because it's adjacent or just because?
No, it's, it's a certain distance downstream, and FEMA's authority extends, this is a riparian situation, so the surveyors are obligated to establish what is the flood fringe and floodway on any potentially affected parcels. So I don't know what that distance is, but his parcel and his neighbor's parcels are not affected, and I know that because that was the result that FEMA approved. And so they're only included in the drawing because FEMA requires when work happens, you have to evaluate, is there anything downstream that would be affected?
All right, thank you. Second call. Anybody wishing to speak?
I would just like to follow up with that. And I would, I would like to see the previous floodway maps before any development was done, because I do not believe that on the north side of the creek, that floodway went up originally roughly 50 feet, now it's about 75 feet, and on the south side of the creek, it's, it's less than 25? I'll never believe that, never.
Okay, well, as our city engineer said, he'll, he'll look into it.
Right, I appreciate that.
You can concur with that. Moving on with the public hearing, third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak? We'll now close the public hearing, move on to item 12. All right, I'm sorry. That was, we're on 10. Moving to 11, which is consideration of the ordinance, rezoning the portions of those properties that, holy smokes, we listed, redoing the flood fringe and floodway approved by FEMA to amend section 17.0306, sub E, sub two, and B of chapter 17 of the zoning and site ordinance of the municipal. Questions from council? Anything? Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to make sure I get this straight and whoever can answer this question, I appreciate it. So the red lines would be going back to 2008, and would that be using the old technology of aerial topography inspections versus the blue or the purplish blue one, which would be the more technologically advanced way of establishing this, this line? Because I noticed, Greg and I were talking about this, the area west of Bartel is significantly smaller than what the red, and then on the east side, it's almost the same, almost, except for a few areas here or there. And the one parcel that we're talking about, I don't know the measurement between the purple, the blue-purple line and the red line, whether it's 30 feet, 40 feet, I don't know, but it's just the question, I guess, is, is the red the old method and the, is the blue the new method? You're nodding your head yes, sir, so? Okay.
Yeah, Alderman Kirkowski, that is correct. Also want to add, those lines are, or the floodway and the floodplain are developed off elevations. So if it's used by old technology, those elevations from the old methods are probably not as accurate, or the topography might have changed, and that's why when there's any grading, those lines are then developed off of what is approved for an elevation for those floodplanes. Now, they'll run through different types of hydraulic modeling to ensure that you don't increase it. There's a certain amount that's allowable and decreased, a certain amount, and that's what FEMA will review to ensure that you don't have that negative impact. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Any just out of process, somewhat intimate, that we were going to look at researching this a bit more, or are we moving forward?
No, he just wants to go over old maps. Really not part of what we're talking about. Building really didn't play into this.
I know, I know. I'm not talking about the building. I'm talking...
There's no reason not to move on. Okay, seeing no other discussion, motion?
We'll move to approve ordinance 3100, rezoning portions of the properties at 9514 South 13th Street, 9554, 9556, 9600, 9654, and 9700 South 13th Street, 9512 and 9601 South Bartel Court, and 741, 835, 901, 913 West Ryan Road to reflect the flood, FW floodway and flood, reflect the floodway flood fringe boundaries approved by FEMA to amend section 17.0306, sub E, sub two, sub B of chapter 17, zoning and site ordinance of the municipal code.
Kelski, second?
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
And item 12 is a comp plan amendment consideration to request comprehensive plan of the city of Oak Creek that was adopted March 3rd, 2020, last amended December 20th, 2022, as it relates to the properties at 800, 812, and 910 West Oakwood Road. Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a comprehensive land use map amendment request in anticipation of future rezoning for the parcels in front of you. The modification for the comprehensive map is for the two seller parcels. From today's comprehensive map identifies them as a single family going to commercial, and then also modify the comp plan for a single family, for this single family parcel identified here, from single family attached to single family detached. In addition to the exist, to the commercial building, the seller is anticipated with a parking lot expansion anticipated, hence the request. So the map on your left is how the current comprehensive plan looks today, which identifies these three parcels as single family attached. Again, we're not rezoning. We're just talking about a comprehensive land use map, which is kind of the crystal ball that the city adopts, saying this is the, this is how we foresee future land use possibly, and it guides the city when it comes to rezoning. And given the current condition of the seller proposing to expand, we are, the request is to adopt a modified comprehensive land use plan identifying the two parcels owned by the seller as commercial, and then this is a single family home to identify that as single family detached to be comprehensive with the neighborhood to the south and to the west. Plan Commission recommend approval at its March meeting. And again, a future application for rezoning and possible addition to the seller is anticipated. The date isn't known yet.
Thank you for that synopsis, Kristi. Catherine, will you properly read that into record? I went out of order. No, you didn't, I did.
Certainly.
Not on you.
Public, public hearing number three is to consider an amendment to the comprehensive plan the city of Oak Creek adopted March 3rd, 3rd, 2020, last amended December 20th, 2022, as it relates to the properties at 800, 812, 910 West Oakwood Road. Applicant is William Nelson in city of Oak Creek. Property owner is William Nelson and Kay Helkowsky and Mark Hurley. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is March 26th, 2024.
As this is a public hearing, I will make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak? Approach podium. We'll need your name and address for the records, please. This is the first call. Did you want to speak on this item? Oh, that, that's fine. Come on up. You'll have to be on the mic, sir.
My name is Ken Trudeau. Kay Hurley wants me to speak for. Mark Hurley just recently died.
Just address. We need you.
910 West Oakwood Road, Oak Creek, Wisconsin, 53154.
Okay.
Okay, we have a lot of concerns about this. You want to redivide her land, and we've already have a band right behind the bar, the seller, that vibrates the house. And to put another lot on that side, when I mold that over there, it's covered with beer cans and bottles, and it'll just increase, it'll make her, nobody would ever want to buy her house if she wants to sell it. She'll have a bar right next door. It's already bad enough as it is.
So you're...
Ken Trudeau.
Yeah, you're, you're on the cul-de-sac.
Describe what house you're talking about.
910 West Oakwood.
Well, that doesn't help me, sir. If you look...
It's the one, it's, it's this parcel here.
She owns both. It's, that's all her property.
This is 910 right here.
Oh, that's 910.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
So we have, she has a big grievance with it.
Okay, we'll, we'll take it into account as, as we go. We'll get the owners up here to describe. Oh, okay, we'll, we'll take it into account as, as we go, we'll get the, the owners up here to describe.
Right now, she's really in the dark about it, even I, and if anything, we'd want time to get a lawyer or something to help us digest what the heck is going on with it.
Okay, well, okay. Uh, second call, anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call. Okay, we will close the public hearing on the, uh, comp plan, go to 13th, and it's consideration to adopt amending the comprehensive plan of the city of Oak Creek, March 3rd, 2020, uh, that was last amended December 30th, 2022, for the properties at 800, 812, and 910 West Oakwood Road. So, uh, Kristi, you kind of ran through this early on and kind of shortened it up, but just kind of describe what the comprehensive plan is and what it entails for the city.
Yeah, sure. Uh, so every municipality in the state of Wisconsin is required to adopt a 20-year vision, long-term plan for the city. Um, every single parcel in a comprehensive map that is, is identified as a future use, um, the city evaluates, you know, maybe we see this neighborhood staying single family, maybe we see these parcels or this neighborhood transitioning potentially over the next 20 years from, um, from commercial to industrial, just throwing examples out there. But it's basically a crystal ball, the city forecasts, maybe these are the changes that we see the city making over the next 20 years. It is not an adoption of zoning, it's not, um, it's not a law for uses, that's what zoning is. Zoning is the law for uses that are allowed on a particular parcel, a comprehensive map is just basically a guidance. It, it's a map, guidance for the city of what the city foresees particular uses to be. And if a request comes before the city to rezone a parcel, which is the law, the city must look at the comprehensive map and say, this is, this is the guide, this is the, um, path we saw, the type of use we saw in the future, or we, um, identified it differently 15 years ago, but today things have transitioned. So this is an example where, um, when the city adopted its comprehensive map, sorry, I don't know what year, um, probably 2010, something like that, original, the original, um, years ago, the city identified these three parcels highlighted in brown as single family attached, that that was the transition that the city saw. And now we have an applicant, the owner of the seller, requesting to modify of, hey, we, we would like to expand our commercial use, so we would like our two parcels to be identified as commercial and as identified in red in the map on the right. And the, um, representative of the owner of 910, um, that's the parcel here that we're also talking about this evening, the request is to, or the application is to, and I should say it's kind of on the city's behalf, it, the seller didn't apply for that particular parcel. It's just, uh, that that parcel would be a standalone in the comprehensive map as identified as single family attached. A single family attached are, for example, side-by-side condos versus single family detached, that's just your standalone, single family home. So the city is kind of acting as the applicant suggesting to change that one parcel from a single family attached to a single family detached, because one, that's how it is today, and, um, two, that is how the entire neighborhood to the west and south is as well, it's a single family neighborhood. So again, we're not, we're not rezoning anything. Um, if the county council were to adopt this comprehensive land use map amendment this evening, it doesn't act as, um, an endorsement for a future project on any of these parcels. It's just simply saying that we see the use being commercial and not single family attached.
Thank you for that, Kristi. So for the folks that came up and had the concerns, does that make sense to you? It's, it's not a rezone, so your property's not being affected that way, but you'll have to come up to the podium if you want to speak, sir. Uh, but in the overall view of the city?
Because we thought this, these two, uh, rectangles were her property, and then you guys were gonna divide her property.
No, 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 no. Those are existing parcels.
Okay, see, we didn't know.
No, and that's fine, that's why.
Hopefully we can work stuff out with the noise.
So, you know, to be clear, um,
I thought you guys were dividing her property.
No, no, not at all.
We don't get to do that, so.
No. So we're just going, future land use could be this. Um, and to be fair, Bill or Shirley, do you want to speak about how you obtained a property and what you intend to do with it, maybe put these folks at ease a little bit? Uh, name and address, please.
William Nelson, 811 East Elm Road, Oak Creek.
So, uh, you decided to expand parking, and they just wouldn't sell you the little parcel, you had to take the whole thing, right?
Right, so I'm not sure, I think it was like 16 acres approximately, the, the larger parcel, we just wanted that one acre to the east between us and the tracks to expand our parking. Um, we've been there for 25 years, our business has increased immensely over that time, so we need more parking. Um, so we bought the whole property, we have no intentions of doing anything in the back of the property, we just want to get that parking lot approved to the east between us and the tracks, uh, moving forward. And then we want to expand our kitchen, we're trying to do that too as well. Um, I believe there's plans already submitted for that, for like 2,500 square foot addition to the, to the west. Anyway, that was not going to increase our seating at all. Um, we don't have any storage in our building, the seller is the seller, that's our business, is in the basement. So the existing kitchen now will be additional storage, um, you know, so, yeah, it's just that our businesses outgrew the building, I mean, it's pretty simple.
How long has the seller been there?
1860 something. Yeah, it really has, it's, it's crazy, um.
And again, when it, you know, uh, the neighbor, you know, just kind of had some static there about
Sure, I understand completely.
and things like that, we, we'd ask you to patrol that, and of course, noise ordinances do apply to you,
Yeah.
and you're well aware of that.
Yeah, sure. We try to keep it as quiet as we can. I mean, when we first started, you know, in 99, I'd say our, we were 80% liquor, 20% food at the business. Um, and now we're, we're more of a restaurant now, we're not a bar, I wouldn't say a bar, we're almost 70% food. You know, it's, it's crazy, our food just expanded, so, yeah, it's a different crowd now. We, you know, we talk about it all the time, we do faces every, every day, you know, it used to be like a regular's place, like a, a Cheers, and now, you know, everybody, now you walk in on a Saturday, and it's like, I don't know hardly anybody, it's a few people here and there, you know, but it's a good problem to have, the city's booming and people are moving into the city, and, you know, we really are benefiting from that.
I was there last week, and, uh, the tables were packed, and there was one person at the bar, to your point.
Yeah, crazy, it's, it's different.
That's something, Kristi?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the neighbors be aware that if and when an application moves forward for any sort of expansion, you will be notified as well.
Get up to the podium, sir.
Called once, and he, two minutes, they turned it down, but we don't want, we want, we know he's booming, and we try to be real understanding, but it does actually shake the house sometimes. And with him going forward, try to help us go around all that, no problem. We actually thought her, you guys are rezoning her property, that's what we thought, we were like, what's this man?
We can't do that, but we do appreciate you taking care of it at the lowest levels. And again, usually if you let them know, they're not aware of it until you let them know, so. Um, council members, anything? Okay, um, seeing nothing, motion?
We'll move to approval ordinance, number 3101, adopting amendments of the comprehensive plan, city of Oak Creek, the properties at 800, 812, and 910 West Oakwood Road.
Chris Kuskowski, a second? Roll call?
Alderman Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
And the public hearings just keep coming. Now we got a rezone and a PUD amendment, uh, by Ryan Jansen, Jansen Brechner LLC to rezone to RD1, a two-family residential, no change to flood fringe, floodway or flood, flood fringe districts, and to amend the planned unit development affecting the portions of the properties at 641 and 819R East Drexel. Catherine?
Public hearing number four is to consider a request submitted by Ryan Jansen, Jansen Brechner LLC to rezone to RD1, two-family residential, no change to FW floodway, FF flood fringe districts, and to amend the planned unit development affecting portions of the properties at 641 and 819R East Drexel Avenue. Applicant is Ryan Jansen, Jansen Brechner LLC, property owner, Jansen Brechner LLC, uh, WI LLC. Legal description there follows, date of notice is April 22nd, 2024.
Okay, Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my presentation will cover items 14, 15, 16, and 17, um, they can all be considered together, it, well, sorry, I don't know if, speaking out of term, but they're all regarding the same project. Um, first is a PUD amendment, um, the two fam, of RD1, two-family residential underlay will remain. The PUD was originally approved in 2022. The amendment, um, doesn't modify changes to layout or the number of units proposed, but rather amend, it's amendment to the models, the look of the condos, uh, landscaping requirements, brick-stone depth. Um, they were requested to the plan commission on April 23rd. Uh, a thinner brick was requested, um, to be, and it was proposed to be compensated by installing one tree per lot. The, the look is going to be the same to you and I, we probably wouldn't even know the difference, um, we're talking about just the depth of a brick. Um, but the plan commission did recommend approval of that. And, um, after the plan, excuse me, the amended conditions and restrictions are in front of you. Again, the section updated the model, the home models, um, just some minor technical modifications, clarified some landscaping requirements. Um, the statute actually requires that a PUD, um, cannot be, uh, rescinded or, um, there can be no expiration dates. Uh, it has to be approved and good for five years, so that modification was made to one particular section of the PUD. And then an additional request was made by the applicants, and it was kind of come to everyone's attention after the plan commission meeting. So this is new to the common council, that the plan commission did not get to review, it's related to the maximum percentage of the front facade of a home when you have an attached garage. Our code states that garages located on and set ahead of the primary facade, so they stick out a little bit more than the front facade. They can't exceed 45% of the facade's total width. Um, however, 26 of the buildings, uh, have the width being 55%. The garage is 55% of the width of the home, and then seven of the buildings, the garage comprises 63% of the width. Um, and to compensate for that, the applicant's proposing to install a split rail fence around the wetlands on the properties. Um, so I'm going to show you just some updated home models. The buildings still look very nice, staff didn't object to the percentages that were identified after the plan commission meeting. So this is home model number one, number two, three, and four. And then also, um, before you, on the agenda, the pink lines identified are the current lot lines, and so there's certified survey map on the agenda, and the modification includes two single family homes along Drexel, and then removing, um, the Z-ties, or, excuse me, installing Z-ties to basically erase these lot lines here identified in the green circle. So those, that's a modification with the certified survey map, and then also on the agenda this evening is an adoption for condominium plat. Uh, the condominium plat identifies ownership and association responsibilities, and, um, this is the layout of the particular condominium plat, so plan commission recommended approval of everything. Again, just a modification is that garage width percentage that the plan commission was not aware of because it came to light after the meeting.
Okay. Uh, as this is a public hearing, I will make three calls. Uh, this will be the first call, anybody wishing to speak? Name and address, sir?
This is Ryan Jansen, S98W33270, Genevieve Drive in Maguano. Um, Kristi, can you flip back to all about the number of buildings?
Oh.
Yeah, so, um, that's not totally accurate. So seven, seven of the buildings, you know, he tumbles a little bit, he can, he can run on, sorry. Uh, so, so the second line is correct, seven of the buildings will be 63%, but the 55% is closer to, um, I was just trying to count them real quick, but there's nine or 10 that have side entry that the, um, we're not asking for any exemption for, so it really is about 16 probably of the buildings would be 55%, and then seven of the buildings would be the 63%.
What's code, Kristi? What was the current design?
The code says that, um, the garage should not exceed 45% of the width of the building, the, so just under half.
Before we move forward, can we take care of 15 in the public hearing? With the, with the flood, flood fringe stuff, and then we'll move on to the next two items with, with, uh, the, the maps, how's that? All right, so, hang tight. Uh, second call, anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call. Okay, we will close the public hearing on 14, consider the ordinance to rezone, uh, the two-family residential, no change to the flood fringe and flood fringe districts, and amend the planned unit development affecting the portions of the property at 641 and 819R East Drexel Avenue, so. Uh, 14. 15.
15.
14 was a public hearing, 15 is consideration of that. So is there any questions regarding them flood fringes and?
This, is this also the PUD in our packet in 15, it goes into the, the depth of the brick and the?
It will, it will. But before we got into the discussion, I really wanted to shut down the public hearing. Now, PUD questions, anything?
I have maybe not a question, maybe a comment. Um, this was kind of, this was talked about in length at planning, um, specifically the, the request to reduce the, the three-inch requirement in the brick down to an inch and a half, which was approved, but there was some discussion on it, um, because a lot of thought was put into the, the zoning code update. But the argument that materials have improved, it's still high quality at inch and a half, obviously it's cheaper is my assumption, is another reason they're going from three inch down to an inch and a half, but that was approved. Now this new information that's brought to light, again, per code requiring no more than 45% of the facade be garage. And I know these numbers are off, but we're still talking, more than half of the buildings in this entire development are, are looking to go 55 to 63% of the, the front facade. I'm not sure how I feel about that with this new information, um, considering we just updated the zoning code, and here's an entire development where the building material is looking to be under what's required, and the garage facade on the majority of the buildings is looking to be more than what we went through this entire code update to be. So, those are my comments for now.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else? Steve?
Mayor, I, I would agree with Lisa that, uh, this should be approved by plan, the plan commission first, before it comes to us, that way they're doing their job that they're supposed to do.
Okay, um, then we'll need a motion, hold on 15.
Is it 15 that we can approve?
No.
15 is kind of a duel.
It is, it includes. It includes the PUD if it was just floodways.
How's that affect seventeen too? We hold fifteen?
That would be the condominium plats. If I'm correct, the plats, the layout of the buildings.
I thought too. Are we? Oh, I'll make them.
Is the plat, property boundaries or?
The numbers of buildings wouldn't change. The plat designates the number of buildings, not the size or width of the garage. Can't speak from the audience.
Ryan, why don't you come up here?
Plat does have the exact building.
The plat speaks to the proportions of the building.
Right, so if we had, if we had to change building designs, the plat would have to be changed.
Ryan, as long as you're standing there, maybe inform us a little bit what the nature of the change, did the house get smaller, garage get bigger, or some of the both?
No, the houses are exactly the same as the first time we approved this back in two thousand twenty-two. The buildings are exactly the same. The only thing we, the layouts, sorry, are the same. The only thing we changed were we changed from a gable roof to a hip roof. But everything else, as far as layout and what they look like really from the street, is the same. I guess, I just, just for informational purposes, it sound like this is going to get tabled, but just so you guys know when.
Not tabled, held.
Or, right. When I'm looking at this and you take this, Kristi, pull up the, just the first rendering. So we did these, that, that's a fifty-five percent coverage rendering right there. And when, when you lay out these condos and you're developing a subdivision like this, you have a standard width, so it's an eighty-foot building. And those two garages are about twenty-two feet apiece. So that puts us at about fifty, right, at fifty-five percent, right? So in order to achieve this forty-five percent, you would need a one-hundred-foot wide building, which ends up just being too large of living space to put in, in the building. You end up with, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred square foot. We, when we read the conditions and restrictions, there was some confusion in the language that we were under the impression that the models that were presented to Plan Commission were approved models, and that if we were to change anything or add any additional models, they have to meet X, X ordinance or whatever the rest of the conditions and restrictions were. So the, the, the sentence in the conditions, the, there was some ambiguity, I guess, in our opinion, to, to the language of that. So when, at Plan Commission, when it, it, it still was not clear because that Plan Commission, Carrie, didn't put up the exact language. She just put up some kind of bullet points. So it didn't, the language that we requested be put in the condition of restrictions wasn't presented to Plan Commission. And then when we went to ask it to be corrected in the conditions and restrictions afterwards, that's why we're here and that's why we're doing it now. But I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, is when you take an eighty-foot, and, and this is just for you guys to understand the mind of a developer and what I'm thinking about when I'm, I'm putting one of these together, right? If you now take an eighty-foot building and now it has to be a hundred-foot building, throughout this development, it goes from thirty-three buildings down to somewhere around twenty-six. You're going to lose six or seven buildings in a development like this. And at that point, it becomes cost prohibitive. So this ordinance also applies to single families. So you have this, you have a single-family zoning district that has a seventy-foot lot, right? And ten-foot side yard setbacks, so you have a fifty-foot building pad. In order to have a two-car garage that's a little bit forward of the house, you have to build exactly to the fifty feet, like you have to fill the entire. Right.
But I develop more lots, not open.
Right.
And the question is, are we not projected on their plans because of what our code said? So if we like to go through with it without going through proper channels, the Plan Commission, it's not fair to work from the eyes of our law. The code is there to protect the entire city, and we have to go through that.
I understand. I mean, this is just, I'm, this is where.
I understand what you're saying, and I, I understand everything that you're saying. I know you're trying to explain it to us. I understand what you're saying, but it's not going to change.
I'm, I'm done with that part. I was just saying this was the process that was recommended that we tried by Carrie and Kristi. So that's, that's why we're, you're talking about.
Yeah. We'll, we'll wheel it back around.
Yeah, it's substance enough.
Yeah, for sure. Makes sense. Understand why he's, why he's asking for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think. Timing wise, you have to be, we have a limited, there's one, one gap in the summer. Make sure you keep track of that and the processes.
Probably hit the next plan. Should be able to hit the next plan.
But you're, you got ET on start? You're, you're, you're too behind already, right?
We're grading.
Oh, you're starting?
Yeah, we're, we're grading, ponds are in, we're moving everything.
Okay, well.
We'll need a hold on fifteen.
Well, like I said, like the first time it was approved, the, we read it as these approved models, so we were assuming that those are models were approved. We looked at it a little closer. It said there was some language that kind of kicked it back to another part of the conditions and restrictions, but.
Okay. Forging forward on fifteen, we're going to have to do a hold recommended back to the Plan Commission to a date. How, how quick can we get him on plan? No, go ahead.
Well, my thought would be not to hold Mr. Jansen to anything, and then also not to hold the city to anything depending on schedules and meeting dates and publication notices as needed. Having said that, it sounds like fifteen would be a motion to hold ordinance number three one zero two and direct the matter back to Plan Commission for consideration. And not to speak out of turn, but as it relates to this project, it would seem, and I would certainly yield to the council, and to mayor, and certainly the developer, CSM, it would seem for sixteen could move forward. And I think I heard Mr. Jansen indicate that certainly seventeen would be desired to be held as well for the plat.
Yeah.
They are related.
Just in case, yeah.
So for efficiency.
Let's move that way.
So we can hold seventeen?
You got to hold fifteen directed back to Plan. Hold seventeen and we can go with sixteen.
Maybe I suggest considering going in order, taking sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, just for the record.
Uh, Steve?
Yep, got it.
All right. All right, Steve.
Okay.
Want to go?
Kerkowski will make a motion to hold consideration of ordinance number thirty-one zero two affecting portions of the property at six forty-one and eight one nine R East Drexel Avenue, and directing that it go back to the Plan Commission for consideration. Four seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Hi.
Marshall.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Ritz.
Hi.
And sixteen is consideration of the revolute, resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Ryan Jansen, Jansen Brechner LLC, properties at six forty-one and eight nineteen R East Drexel.
We're good with that one?
Then we're good with that one.
Kerkowski will make a motion to adopt resolution number one two four nine eight dash zero five two one two four, approving a certified survey map submitted by Ryan Jansen, Jansen Brechner LLC for the properties at six forty-one and eight one nine R East Drexel Avenue. Four seconds.
Uh, is there any discuss before we?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were ready to go with that.
No, actually, I thought we were, but is there any discussion before we do the roll? Okay. Roll call.
Elder woman, Marshall. Gail.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Ritz.
Hi.
And seventeen is consideration of a resolution approving the condominium plat submitted by Ryan Jansen, Jansen Brechner LLC for Stone Brook Park condominiums and properties at six forty-one and eight nineteen R East Drexel. That's a hold. Is there any discussion before we do that? Seeing none?
Kerkowski will make a motion to hold consideration of resolution number one two four nine nine dash zero five two one two four regarding the condominium plat for portions of, for properties at six forty-one and eight one nine R East Drexel Avenue, and direct it back to the Plan Commission for consideration. Four seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Ritz.
Hi.
Marshall.
Hi.
Okay. Back around with these as quickly as we can with resolution. New business, item eighteen, consideration of motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of Donald Garcia Dwyer, seventy-seven oh five South Manitowoc to the zoning boards of appeals and housing board of appeals for a three-year term to expire April of twenty-seven. Questions, concerns with that? Okay. Seeing none, motion?
Bill moved to concur with the mayor's appointment of Donald Garcia Dwyer, seventy-seven zero five South Manitowoc Avenue to zoning board of appeals slash housing board of appeals for a three-year term to expire April two thousand twenty-seven.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Ritz.
Hi.
Marshall.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
And item nineteen is consideration of a motion to designate the Now Media Group, apparent group for Journal Sentinel and South Now Edition to serve as the official city newspaper for the next twelve months. Discussion, comments? He used to be so colorful on this subject.
That's because Mike, Mike's head is stuck in his.
Okay. If there's no further discussion or comments, motion on nineteen.
Bill moved to designate Now Media Group to serve as this official city newspaper for the next twelve months.
Four seconds.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Ritz.
Hi.
Marshall.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
And item twenty is engineering and its consideration of a resolution approving funding agreement with MMSD for Green Solutions Oak Creek Police Station Forest Pavement Phase Two. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor, Matt Sullivan, Assistant City Administrator and City Engineer. Before you is that resolution for approving the funding agreement with MMSD Green Solutions for Phase Two of the police department parking lot. We were able to secure about four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in Green Solutions funding that would complete basically the replacement of the police parking lot. Other than the impound area that's fenced in, I did speak with Captain or Chief Stecker. There would be some issues, obviously, if we were to move vehicles out of the impound area, and there's no concerns with not replacing that pavement. This would actually complete all of the work by two thousand twenty-five. This year we'll be doing Phase One, and within the next month, you'll probably be seeing that coming forward as far as approval for that contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt? That's quite a savings for the city. Appreciate that, going green. Stuff. No further discussion, motion?
Bill moved to approve resolution one two four nine seven dash zero five two one two four approving a funding agreement with MMSD for Green Solutions Oak Creek Police Station Forest Pavement Phase Two.
Just go, one second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Hi.
Ritz.
Hi.
Marshall.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
And item twenty-one is information technologies and its consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of audiovisual equipment and technical services from Metro Sound and Video in the amount of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and four dollars. And Tom's here to explain it all.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tom Scammer, IT Director. This proposal is for an upgrade to the audiovisual technology in the multipurpose room in part with the Health Department. This is going to be funded, excuse me, this is going to be funded and already approved as use of funds by the Department of Health Services, who is the Health ARPA grant issuer. The room was initially set up only for sharing a screen for meetings, but nearly ten years later, we have expanded the use of that room significantly. We currently can only hold a hybrid conference meeting with roughly about ten people in the largest room for the civic center. So this kind of poses an issue for larger scale meetings that we've been having. This upgrade will add cameras, ceiling microphones, and a more open way to use the technology in that room. Additionally, the current hardware in the room is aging, and we have had and continue to have several issues with the technology that the integration vendor cannot fix, and we can't source replacement parts for. So we're looking to use this funds to get this room back up to order. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Was this on the budget?
This was not in the, hence why we're doing this in council, not Bob Walker. Because of the cost of it, it's over the fifty thousand dollar limit for unbudgeted. But because it's grant funded, that's why I'm here today.
An unbudgeted capital item, which is of the council's authority, so long as we designate a funding source, that funding source is the federal government. So kind of a win-win for us in that we had some federal grant dollars that the Health Department had wanting to help us out and make this a better hybrid meeting environment.
Questions, discussions? Seeing none, motion?
Kuzakowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Hi.
Marshall.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Thank you, Tom. License Committee, item twenty-two, I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the common council report that you have tonight, you will notice that there are eight requests for transient merchant licenses. And I just need to give you some background on that. As this, this all was predicated on the storms that came through the area a couple of weeks or less ago, and there happened to be an influx of people going door-to-door, looking for inspection services, fixture roofs, hail damage, you know, so on and so forth. And I don't know about any other aldermen, but I got several calls, including myself, and somebody showed up at, at our house. And residents were calling. It was plastered on, on Facebook that a lot of these people are, are going door-to-door without their required license. So, you know, I was directing these people to contact the, the clerk's office, and Catherine can, can confirm this, but I think Krista, our assistant, or Deputy City Clerk, was probably inundated with, with these requests, and, and she managed to take care of the business, and that's why we see eight of them on our, on our license. Is that correct? Krista would probably do that. Were you involved in that there, Catherine?
Yeah, that's correct. There was actually, I think, more than sixteen that were processed last week, and then this week I've processed already probably four or five with additional calls coming in. So they're, they're not, there's no slowdown in the request for transient merchant licenses.
I gotta give kudos to Leslie, who probably runs the, does the Facebook stuff, because it was all over the place, and, and people were told, if you don't see the, the license on the vendor, to either call City Hall or call the non-emergency number for the police department. And by virtue of everybody doing, being so observant, these people walking around the city, we have eight tonight, so, and we have more to, more to come. And, you know, one, one company says, well, can you speed it up because we may lose business? And I told them, sorry, we, we do things a certain way, and this is the way we do it, and this is what we have tonight. So having said all that, does anybody else have any questions, cares, or concerns regarding what's on the report? Great. Kerkowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four License Committee Report.
Second.
Roll call.
Elder woman, Marshall. Gail.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Ritz.
Hi.
And item twenty-three is our vendor summary report. And it's consideration of that motion for the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four summary in the amount of six hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Please take a few moments, and if you have questions, please take the floor. You are satisfied, there's no discussions or questions, motion please.
Bill moved to approve the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four vendor summary report in the amount of six hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred Bill moved to approve the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four vendor sum report in the amount of six hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars, seventy-eight cents.
Kuzakowski, one second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item twenty-four is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section nineteen point eight five to discuss the following. A, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G, to discuss the Setzer Property MKE LLC versus the City of Oak Creek, Milwaukee County, case number twenty twenty-three, CV zero zero sixty seventeen. And B, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E and, sub G, consider the subrogation claim of Foremost Insurance Group on behalf of their insured, William Janis regarding the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four automobile accident involving a city vehicle. President Gail?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following. A, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G, to discuss sets of properties MKE LLC versus City of Oak Creek. B, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E and G, to consider the subrogation claim of Foremost Insurance Group on behalf of their insured, William Janis regarding the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four automobile accident involving a city vehicle.
Kuzakowski, one second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session and return at its conclusion. We'll now consider a motion to reconvene into open session.
Bill moves to reconvene in open session.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item twenty-six is to take any action if needed.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill moved that the common council moves to accept the settlement agreement with sets of properties MKE LLC from Milwaukee County, case number two zero two three, CV six zero one seven. It authorizes the mayor to sign that agreement.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And the common, Gil also recommends the common council moves to approve the payment of the Foremost Insurance Group claim in the amount of eighty-two hundred, eight dollars, thirty-five cents on behalf of their insured, William Janish, for the full settlement and release of all claims.
Lorik seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
That will lead us to adjournment.
Russell motion to adjourn.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Alright, thank you all, have a great week.
Alright.